Good evening. Welcome to the September 28th, 2021 meeting of the Dover School Committee. My name is Sarah Gutierrez Dunn and I call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with the Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and please be aware that anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. First on our agenda this evening is community comments. Please remember that community comments are an opportunity for members of the school committee to listen to members of the community. It is not a forum for answering questions or engaging in a debate. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, no more than three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. Once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three school districts. Do we have any community comments this evening? I would ask that anyone on the Zoom, please go ahead and just raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment. I'm not seeing any raised hands unless anyone else is. All right, this closes the the public comment portion of our meeting tonight. Before we proceed with the superintendent's update, we do have a committee organization matter to attend to. All of you may have noticed that we are not joined this evening by Leslie Leon, who submitted her resignation from the Dover School Committee last week. I am most grateful to Leslie for her leadership and for her many contributions to this committee. I'm sure that all of you join me in that and she will be sorely missed. I have been in touch with the town clerk and the Board of Selectmen's Office to discuss the process for filling the vacancy until the town election in May. And my suggestion would be that we post the vacancy perhaps as early as tomorrow with two weeks for candidates to submit their letters of interest and resumes. And that timeline would put us in the position of being able to conduct candidate interviews in open session and deliberate regarding our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen in advance of the Selectmen's October 21st meeting. And so I just want to take a quick poll. Would would committee members be available on either the evenings of October 14th, which is a Thursday, and/or Monday, October 18th, to conduct interviews and deliberate regarding our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen? I just want to make sure that we're reserving some time. Does that work for you, Mark? Liz?
Yes.
We certainly may not need both evenings, but I'd like to just reserve the time and we can see where it goes. So I appreciate that. I will write this up so that we can post the position and the application process on the Dover Sherburne website and move forward accordingly. In the meantime, we do need to elect a new secretary as Leslie had been serving in that position. I would like to nominate Mark Healy for the role if he's willing to accept. Could I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Thanks, Colleen. Any discussion? All right, hearing done, let's take a roll call vote. Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, yes. Thank you, Mark, for stepping into this role. Appreciate it. All right, so without further ado, let's get into the the substance of our agenda this evening. And first, we have an update from our interim superintendent Kathleen Smith.
Thank you Chairperson Gutierrez Dunn. I also want to thank Leslie Leon. I didn't have an opportunity to work with her very long, but I know the commitment of all of you. I've sat in this seat for just a little over or under three months, and I'm watching the work of any school committee person, and it certainly takes a lot of effort. So thank you, Leslie, and Mark, congratulations. I know you'll be a great partner working with Sarah. So I'm going to do something tonight that I have never done in all my years as superintendent. You've heard of speed dating? This is speed reporting. And I say this respectfully, that we have an hour before we're doing a very important joint meeting of the school committees. And I want to make sure, having done this similar thing with Sherburne last week, that I give opportunities for your principal, Dr. Deb Reinemann. So I'm going to very quickly ask Beth McCoy, my assistant superintendent, to put up the so-called PowerPoint. And I'm going to open by just saying that we, it seems like such a long time ago, but we began school, next slide, please. We began school on August 30th. It was a great day, an introduction. And the one thing I would like to bring to your attention, and I would love to play it tonight. So after I had a chance to speak, introduce myself, talk about my career and my excitement being here in Dover Sherburne, our assistant superintendent put on what's called Silver Linings. And if you haven't had a chance to see it, anybody out there watching, please take the opportunity. It's probably a little over, I want to say, 10 or 12 minutes. And it really captures all of what last year was all about, the past 18 months, and what your district did to support our teachers, our students. I tell everybody, and Sarah, I know you were there with me that day, truly, when I say a standing ovation that lasted a very long time, the appreciation for really every, not only what Beth put together, but really for what everyone did last year. So please take the time to look at that. You also have in this PowerPoint, next couple of slides, your new hires. And having been at Chicaring and seeing the new people on board, the excitement of being part of a dynamic staff over there. Next slide, you actually have what we did on opening day was congratulate the people that have achieved longevity, 15 years, 20 years. You see your own principal and assistant principal on 20-plus years in the Dover Sherburne Public Schools. Congratulations. I actually just saw Christine Atkinson. I think she's on this evening. And 15 years again, congratulations, and anybody else that's listening. That's a testament again to the dedication to your children and the district. Opening day, if I can go to the pictures very quickly. I loved opening day in your district, and I have to tell you, being in your district and, there we go, being in your day and getting to every one of the schools, I was excited. I actually started out at Chicaring. It was my first opportunity. It was amazing to me as I toured the building with the principal and assistant principal, the kids were working, the buses had pulled up. I mean, you would have thought they had already been in school a month. The excitement was there. When I have gone on previous occasions, I'm still seeing that same excitement. I did put in a couple of region pictures. You see the staff here at your region getting ready to serve, you know, hundreds of lunches. Next slide, please. This again, you see Chicaring on the two ends and in the middle, I believe, I'm sorry, I think it's the middle school and in the middle is Pine Hill. And I want you to take a look at a table that would hold probably about eight to 10, has about four students. And that is what we're trying to do to continue to socially distance, especially when the masks are down and our children are eating. Next slide. I put this, this is, this is all Chicaring. I got to spend some time on, I think, September 15th, in your preschool. I got to do closing exercises with the students as they prepared to leave half a day. You see up there, a classroom with, again, different types of learning spaces. And I purposely put in, I purposely put in the picture with your high schoolers, because as you look at these little preschoolers, very soon you'll be looking at them at your high school level. And I want you to see them in the media center of the library, you know, collaborating, working. This also was, I believe, the first day of school. Next slide, please. The district priorities, I'm not going to read them. It is the health and safety of all our staff and students. Everything that we're doing, we're trying to get back to pre-COVID instructional environment, but we are encouraging vaccinations for all eligible staff and students. You had the joint meeting of the Dover and Sherburne Boards of Health. They have come up with a staff vaccination mandate. We'll be talking about that at our joint school committees meeting right after this meeting at 7:30, if those of you would like to join and hear about our protocols. Next slide. And my visit, I really have just started to already talk about it. I've visited kindergarten classroom. My goal is to visit all classrooms by the end of October. So very soon, I think things will settle down a little bit, and I'll be able to reach that goal. I love this picture of your little ones. Again, we're taking a little stroll in the school, nurturing their little ones. And when you talk about social and emotional learning, even with your youngest learners, it was inspiring. I mentioned the end-of-the-day activities in the preschool class. And the one thing I want to bring, I know some things have come up about mask breaks. And this again is something, as I walk the halls with the principal, you know, I see kids taking a loop around the building. They're outside in the fields. They have opportunities at lunch and recess. So your teachers are very tuned in, as we all are. And beautifully, you can see the new flooring. It's so welcoming with your hallways and your entryways. Next slide. Again, we have testing going on at all of our schools, at our elementary schools. We have have the symptomatic testing, the test and stay program, and the pool surveillance testing. We're working with CIC, which is the state vendor. I'm asking families, our numbers are starting to get up there. If you haven't given consent, we're really starting to get this down to the point that I was told today that it is working like clockwork. And I will tell you that we have submitted well over 200 pools. All of them have been negative. And that should be reassuring to all of us that we're being as careful as we can with these mitigation strategies we're employing. And kudos to our nurse leader, Jill Fidor, all of our nursing staff, Kate McCarthy, Adam Henry from from your district, a parent who's jumped in at a time where we need support. Next slide. And as you can see, this is the numbers from Chicaring. This pooled surveillance testing began on September 14th. 389 students have consented to the test, 78% of the students in the building. We do have some families opting out. I hope you'll take a look and you might want to rethink it or get more information. We're happy to provide that. Again, it is important, we're trying to get up to 80, 85%. And next, next slide. MCAS, I'm going to save this for, we did get the results. I believe parents will be getting them by the end of September, which is quickly coming this week, two days. I will tell you, it was a shortened exam last year for our students in grade three through eight. We had a whole lot of concern about even administering this test last year. It is only one measure of a child's growth and achievement, but that information will be shared with families. And I'm going to turn this, oh, and I have to tell you, one of the best things that we did, and I think I'm ending here, is that we had a retreat last night with our region school committee. Coming up on October 7th, the Dover School Committee and the Sherburne School Committee will be meeting for their retreat. We met last night for three hours and almost 20 minutes. It was an excellent, it was reflective. We did not get through the whole agenda. What I will tell you is I think it'll be similar. We're starting to develop protocols, but we have a lot of professional development ahead for us. And I see it as a very positive thing for the district. And let me hand it over to our assistant superintendent. That was fast.
Thank you very much, Kathy.
There, I'm sorry.
Are you ready to go?
I am. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I will be brief, but I will not talk quickly because I'm already guilty of talking quickly. So I'll just talk at my normal speed. So I just wanted to commend all of our educators for the summer professional development that they engaged in. They did take some time off, as they were mandated to do, to catch their breath and to do some things they enjoy. But they did take opportunities to take classes online, all in support of our workaround portrait of a graduate and equity, and in terms of moving forward with all of the silver linings and lessons that we learned that we want to keep from hybrid and remote learning. So lots of opportunities. And I really want to thank the teachers for giving up their summertime to do that. On the bottom left, you'll see a picture of our leadership team. So our school year really begins in August, when this group comes together to put our best thinking together and launch the school year. So we had two days at Hale Reservation. Poor Kathy showed up, ready to engage in all of the resources that Dover Sherburne has to offer. And then we told her she needed to use a porta potty for two days. And so, but she was, she was a good sport and she stuck with us. So we spent time together, building, you know, a sense of community. We spent the first day talking about the equity audit and the work that we want to do to support our kids. NYU was there with us. And the second day of the retreat, we really talked about how we're going to be supporting students this year academically with their social, emotional wellness, etc., knowing that we're coming off of a very difficult year. That said, our goals for this school year, as I mentioned, the silver linings, there are so many things that we learned from the pandemic and that we don't want to let go of, especially because they align with the work that we've done around the portion of a graduate, innovative teaching and learning, the lessons we took away from Finland. So we do want to make sure that we, you know, consider, continue to emphasize depth of learning, alternate assessments, less homework, interactive lessons, and those things moving forward. We don't want to let go of those, those precious pieces. Multi-tiered system of support, formerly known as RTI, is our way of supporting kids. So if you look over on the right, you see the triangle. And really, what this does is it reminds us that we want to be making sure that we're meeting the academic, behavioral, and social, emotional wellness needs of our students. You'll see the green part is the majority of the triangle. That's because we can meet the needs of about 80% of our kids in these three realms through the general education classroom and the work that our teachers and student support folks do with the kids in the classroom. But of course, there are kids who are going to need interventions. And so we want to make sure that we have systems in place to work with students in small groups, either around social, emotional learning, or math, or literacy, and then for students with the highest need at the top of the triangle, that 5%, the students who might need individualized support or individualized programs. So coming off of a year of a pandemic, of course, we wanted to reemphasize the importance of these interventions and the use of data to determine who might need help. Because if you see the picture of the frog leaping from one lily pad to the other, there's been lots of talk about learning loss. We like to say it's unfinished learning and that we entered this year with learning leaps. So second graders who entered third grade are going to be learning third-grade material. Students who finished Algebra II and now are in geometry are going to be learning geometry. But that said, we're going to be keeping a close eye on that data that I mentioned and providing the supports the kids need to access that new level of learning. So every frog's journey across the river might be a little bit different. They might need lily pads in different places, but we're going to make sure that we support all kids. And in the center, you see some of our teacher leaders who came together and we had them engage in this lily pad activity. We didn't give them any rules. They had to learn along the way, but there were so many analogies to be made in terms of supporting kids and what it feels like to be in the role of a student, as well as our need to make sure that we're providing equitable experience to all of our kids. So that's my update. Dr. Reinemann?
Thank you so much.
Evening. I wonder if we can close the PowerPoint for just a second, Beth?
Sure.
Excellent. I've never seen Kathy Smith talk so fast in my life. Thank you. We were thrilled to have you at the building and you're always welcome. It's a great honor to get to share Chicaring, the children and the building. We're very fortunate as a district. I have submitted my report into the packet for this evening. Certainly welcome back. I do have a short video to show you in just a moment, but I thought I'd highlight my report first. As we welcome everyone back, we're getting structures in place. We are now a fully responsive classroom school. So I'm very proud to report that the, every teacher in the building has taken responsive classroom training, and we're following those protocols and practices throughout the building, including morning meeting, which is one of my favorites. So every classroom starts with a morning meeting practically every day, and includes a greeting and instruction and building community in the classroom. So that's a big piece for us. Pool testing is up and running, as Kathy mentioned. And game day is coming Friday. Highlight, highlight of the year, possibly. This is a sort of replacement for field day, because we had to cancel field day two years in a row, but we are still having field day in June. So if you visit Beth or Kathy, you need to wear red, white, or blue. Or red, white, and blue for game day. So send your kiddos in dressed appropriately, please. The School Advisory Council will start up next month, meeting Monday, the 4th, I believe. We have a, the same four parents who have served before and two new teachers so far. We're still recruiting a few more folks in. And that group will be working primarily on Goal Three of our school improvement plan, which is our connecting with the community. So we're looking forward to the creative ways that we'll meet and connect with the folks who are not our immediate family, which is sort of the parents and guardians, but perhaps to the seniors or to younger folks in the community. We had open house, virtual on Thursday. But I think it went pretty well. We managed to send out some pre-recorded materials ahead of time, had office hours for teachers to answer questions. There were certainly some awkward pauses as we all went through virtual meetings. And then we had a parent principal section at the end that Jim and I hosted. We had almost 100 parents there. So, which was fabulous. We answered a lot of COVID questions and some great academic questions, too. So that was a well-attended evening, all in all. So when we started for, we were planning for tonight, I wasn't sure how much time we'd have. So Jim and I planned a little bit about what are the things we really wanted you to see. So we decided that picture was worth 1,000 words. So we snapped some pictures around the building, tried to put them in sort of an organized manner. So if we pop back to the PowerPoint, please, Beth, and play that video, each slide will play about three seconds, and I'll try not to talk over everything, and then I can answer questions after that. That's all right with everyone? Thank you.
Okay, so let's turn it from here. Okay, here we go.
Let's see, didn't set music to it, but. So we are back in. Wanted you to see what the classrooms look like now. There's no desks, very few desks. This is one of our flexible seating classrooms from the DSEF grant a few years ago. If you didn't have time to read that, the beginning of the year assessments are quite a load. So we had a reading camp out that Priscilla Stefan cooked up in the lobby. That's our new floor there. And the kiddos had yoga mats, and they get to read by the campfire. Some tired kindergarteners there, the first or second day of school. And so if we can, I think it'll just pause there. Thank you, Beth. And then this piece, we'll talk through just a little bit. This leads, it connects to the piece Beth was talking about before with our MTSS and the supports. So one of the things that we see, first of all, we're thrilled to have everyone back in and grateful, but there's things that we notice. And so we thought we'd share some of those pieces that we've noticed about the kiddos. Some of them are struggling with social interactions. For example, good old having a conversation by listening and responding to a peer, or even playing games in person. Some students are struggling with executive functioning, and this is more than we would normally see. And part of that is just getting back to organizing your materials in a desk, or how to attack a task more independently. One of the things that I've noticed is their proprioceptive skills. So where they are in space, it seems that my kids are sort of bumping and tripping into things. I don't know if that's just from not being in a big space like a classroom, or it's the mask. I blame every time I trip on a mask. I'm not sure if it's true for them. We also focused on the power standards last year. And as we expected, some students are struggling with content from non-power standards. And again, that's okay. We're ready for that. That's part of that MTSS. What do we need to know? What do they need to know? And how do we need to support them? So we are excited to be getting going on all of that. So, perfect. Thanks, Beth.
Deb, before I forget, it was originally part of my presentation, but do you want to talk a little bit about the pilot we have going with the math specialist and the SEL specialist?
Excellent. Thank you, Beth. So with the grant of some ESSR money and recognizing those needs that we were anticipating of students, we posted and have two new positions across Pine Hill and Chicaring. So we're sharing staff, which is awesome, because they're coming back and forth with fabulous ideas. So Leslie Campbell, who was the academic coordinator for our center, is now the SEI specialist, and she's working with Pine Hill and Chicaring. So she's bringing the learning from our center to Pine Hill and providing SEI supports for Chicaring as before and Pine Hill teachers. Lindsay Weiner, who was a fourth grade math teacher at Pine Hill out on maternity leave, I believe, last year, has returned and become our math interventionist, our math specialist, across both buildings as well. So she's working half her time with Pine Hill and half her time at Chicaring to coach teachers to provide math interventions for our students. We met with both of them today by coincidence, and they are off and running and meeting teachers, meeting students, planning lessons, planning activities. We are very excited to have them both as part of our combined teams. Thanks for reminding, Beth. Today was only the 17th day of school, but it certainly felt like September 42nd. It's been a very interesting start as we get rolling. So I don't know if, Mark, you're feeling that in your school as well, but September's been long. So happy to answer any questions or provide more background on everything I just peppered at you.
Thank you so much, Deb. It's wonderful to see the pictures and see the kids back in the traditional classroom settings and all of the exciting things that are going on right now at Chicaring. And thank you, Kathy and Beth, for your robust presentations as well. I feel like we've had a lot of information thrown at us. And I want to make sure that committee members have a chance of their things that they want to follow up on, questions or comments that they might have for either Kathy, Beth, or Deb. So any, any questions or comments from committee members? Liz?
Just two things. One, I want to thank you all for the efforts that went into getting pool testing to happen. And that it's such, it's like night and day from last year to this year. We are so, so, so lucky that we, A, have this and our pools keep coming back negative at the school that I work at. That is not the case. And it's a reminder that like, we do live in a bubble and to some extent, and like, it is still out there. We have positive cases in our pools every week. So while it's coming back negative, I do think that it's critical that we stick to it. So thank you for making that happen. My second question is, I run the RTI program at the school that I work at for grades K through seven. And I'm just curious how you guys benchmark and progress monitor, like, we happen to use Ames Web Plus. It's like, like, what do you guys use as the program in the district?
Excellent. Beth, and you, me? Okay, so we are using Dibbles for our progress monitoring and Fontis and Pennell for reading assessments. Math, we are fine tuning what we're going to use. Everyday math isn't nimble enough for RTI assessments. So that's where we're really going to be leaning on Lindsay. I expect that we'll be using iXL. The district was generous enough to buy iXL for, I think, all the way to K to 12, right? I only know K to eight, kind of my world. So we'll be using that for math and ELA for assessments, supporting work, MTSS Tier Two, and then it will eventually feed into Panorama, which we're hoping to launch as our data dashboard. So, thanks.
Other questions or comments? Colleen and Mark? Colleen?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentations. I was curious about what the power standards are. That's my first question. And my second is, if you've been seeing any patterns of socio-emotional issues that you're finding post-pand, you know, not post-pandemic, but pandemic going on for a long time. for a long time, what sorts of extra supports the kids are needing in the socio-emotion?
Do I do power standards and other socio-emotional?
Sure. So power standards, so as you know, each content area, English, math, science, social studies, world language, as well as the electives have frameworks at each grade level and each of those frameworks per grade level per subject, you know, is a manual like this, which ideally we'll get through all of them. However, in a pandemic, it's nearly impossible to do that. So the power standards are those that, the content standards and the skills we think are most important for students to learn the material and be ready for the next level. So if there's kind of those nice to know additions, we let those go. And the nice thing is, we had been working on power standards as a district for a few years, trying to really discover, you know, in what topics and what areas do we want to dive in deeper as opposed to trying to cover everything at a surface level? But because of the pandemic, the state finally had to come out and show their hand and tell us what they thought the power standards were. So it really reinforced the thinking that we had been doing and helped the alignment across districts to make sure that the students were learning at least, you know, these basics.
Thank you. So a good example of that is coins in first grade, which there's a question about why are we still teaching coins at all in the United States? We'll go with that later. So for the first grade, they only taught, we'll see if I get this right, quarters and dimes or quarters and pennies. And usually they teach all five coins to full comprehension. This was familiarity with coins, how to count for quarters, how to, I think it was dimes. So it's skip counting too by tens. So, so in second grade, they don't know all their coins. Wouldn't expect them to know all their coins.
You serve the core standards for the, okay.
Right, exactly. SEI, we are seeing more anxiety overall. And I think it's safe to say we were seeing that before the pandemic as well, just in general, anxiety was increasing with students and families. I think returning to school, there's a fair amount of anxiety, children feeling like they're behind and trying to reassure everyone that we're all behind and we're all going to catch up. We'll all get there. So there's a piece of that. We are not seeing school avoidance. I thought we might, but we're not. We are not having issues around mask wearing. We are seeing the difficulties in social interactions. So again, that having a conversation, how to share. That poster, everything I needed to know, I learned in kindergarten. You know, how to share, how to be polite. And we shared a piece today, you may have seen on social media, which talks about for the seventh grader, your current seventh grader, the last year of real school they had was fourth grade. And for sixth graders, it was third grade. And then you back up and you say for kindergarten and first graders, there wasn't a normal year of school. So we have, you know, a lot of, a lot of catching up to do, but everyone does. We noticed at Open House, one of our first grade parents, she was presenting the classroom and taking everyone on a little tour around the room and they were so grateful because they've never been in the building. So our first grade parents haven't been in yet. Which is heartbreaking. It's the reality. But as soon as we can, we'd like to get them in and see that amazing building that we have.
And I can imagine connecting with other families, you know, that usually happens earlier on, you know, kindergarten year, you're all kind of going through it together. So I imagine that some social opportunities for parents, especially in younger grades, would be good too.
We pushed on our PTO new family liaison, which is a fabulous committee to branch out. And so they had two or three open, open play dates at Chickering this year over the summer. And they invited all the new families, which is what we always do, plus their sort of partner families here and then all the new kindergarten families. Great. So we had, you know, three good sized socially distanced playdates at the school. So it was fun to get to meet a lot of families that way.
Great.
Thank you.
And I just briefly wanted to say thank you all for the summary and for the photos because it's terrific to see adults and kids getting back to familiar space and what looks like a very healthy school environment. And Dr. Reidman, just with respect to some things you've noticed. I've, I've noticed similar things at the middle school level and I have to say, one of the most powerful ways to kind of onboard the kids is at, I think, the classroom level where teachers see the same group of kids every day and can kind of track the ability to be socially comfortable and to work with different peers and to kind of calm down the energy when it's needed or make sure someone's engaged and, and present there. So I, it has felt like a forty something day September, but it's been very enjoyable as we kind of feel each day, I think, a little bit of progress and it looks like the same for Dover Sherburne.
Thank you.
One thing I just also wanted to end with, I'm very interested in following kind of the goal of community connections beyond families. And if there's any way that you'd like us to support that, we're happy to. I'm happy to.
Great. Thank you. I'm sure the SAC is going to have some fabulous ideas for us. I'm excited.
Great.
Thank you very much, Deb and Beth and Kathy for your updates. Unless, unless committee members have any other questions or comments, I think next up on our agenda is the warrant report.
Yes, I'm thinking, Dr. Reidman, for getting started without me. I had a microphone issue here. So what we're really doing tonight in your financial report is closing out fiscal year 21. So your warrant report this evening are all the warrants from the last time you met in June through the end of June 30th. And so that's closing out the year. So it's a little bit of a long list because obviously at the end of the year, we're busy getting all of our bills paid. And I continue to thank Mark for going to town hall on probably almost a weekly basis and, and signing warrants for us. So thank you, Mark. Moving on to the financial report. So we, we didn't, basically when we left in June, I think we had a fairly good snapshot of how the fiscal year would end. I've given you a recap of the different categories from your industry perspective. We had a small positive variance in salaries. I think when you read the report, you'll see that it wasn't because it was a little bit here and a little bit there. We had, we actually added a whole teacher. But we had post-budget staffing changes to cover that cost. We were able, fortunate enough to cover some of the additional educational assistance with how we operated in the hybrid model with some of our CARES grants. So that was a very needed a grant that definitely helped us get through how we had to operate last year. On the expenditure side, I think what's driving that, I highlighted for you, your tech oil bid price. That's a probably a majority of the savings. We're always very conservative when we budget for oil. And then you just never know when that, where that bid price is going to come in. Last year, we were very fortunate. We budgeted a little over $2 and it came in at $1.43. So when you use about 30,000 gallons of oil, that sort of generates a savings. The other thing that we saw across all districts is because we were closed from March until June the previous year, we actually still had a lot of supplies and materials in the schools that we were able to utilize in fiscal year 21. So we didn't have to order as much. So you'll see savings and things like general supplies, things in like custodial supplies because we sort of did live off some of our purchases from the previous year. The area where we had the biggest variance off our budget was our added district. And this wasn't, this isn't news. I think we knew about this negative variance pretty on fall last year. But we had nine new placements during the year. It was a combination of new students moving to town that we needed to cover, students already in district that needed to go out of district and some students who changed placements to maybe a higher cost win. So with that said, we exceeded our, our budget by about $600,000. It sounds like a lot, but I think one thing that the Dover School Committee needs to keep in mind is how the town has you budget for out of district. When we put our budget together, we never worry about the unknown and potentials because we always have your circuit breaker reimbursement to fall back on. Dover acts like they're not going to get any circuit breaker reimbursement. And as you know, we get about a million dollars. So we have like a million dollar cushion in our budget. In most years, we're giving back almost a million dollars. In those years where added district sort of rises above where we budget, it's usually a smaller number, which is what happened for fiscal year 21. But when it was all said and done, we're still returning to town, just a little under $700,000. So as, as school community members, I think it's just important that you understand how those finances work. Because if you just look at this information and you don't really know, it looks like, oh my God, you guys don't know what you're doing. You know, you've got this huge negative variance in your operating budget, but you're still giving back all this money. So anytime you have any questions about that, just let me know because I think that's a important piece for school committee members to understand as far as it comes to talking to the general public about our budget. Any questions about just the general fund operating budget for fiscal year 21? Okay. And as we do quarterly, you have your special revenue revolving funds scheduled included. There's not a lot to, to say about that. I've also summarized for you the COVID-related grants that we utilized in fiscal year 21. Reminded you about the municipal cares, the towns did step up and give us almost 90,000 of their municipal monies that we used to purchase a lot of technology. We had our re-owned reopening grant and then we had a small state coronavirus prevention grant. So that sort of summarizes 21. I will apologize, there's a page of my report not in your packet. I will make sure I send you, it's just a couple paragraphs. Make sure you have the full report and I'll have Cheryl repost it on the packet tomorrow. But when we start talking about just a few of the fiscal year 22 budget updates, as we alerted the committee this summer, based on enrollment, we did end up adding two additional sections more than we had in the budget. So I just sort of summarized that scenario for you, just to refresh your memory. And also on the piece of the report that you don't have, I talk about the two new positions that both Beth and Deb discussed about the point five math specialist and the point five SEL specialist, just so that you're aware of all the things that we added. And I made a point of saying that, you know, as we start the budget discussions for fiscal year 23, we'll obviously be talking about those new positions and what needs to be incorporated into our general fund going forward. So keep all those in mind. So they don't seem like they're, you know, new information when we start doing the budget process. The other piece of information I provided for you are the COVID-related grants that are available for us for this year, fiscal year 23 and into fiscal year 24. So we are working on sort of budgeting those funds right now. But when you get the report, it'll have the dollar amounts for you and a little bit of how we're dealing with those right now. So we're in a good, we're in a good position because obviously both federal and state wants to make sure all of our kids are covered. And we, we make up as much of the learning loss as we can. And they want to make sure that no, no school district is sort of constrained by financial issues in order to make that happen. So I think we're very fortunate.
Thank you, Dawn. I completely agree. And thank you both for that retrospective look at our FY21 and for your forward-looking guidance as we, as we look forward as well. Questions, comments from committee members? All right. Well, thanks again, Dawn. And moving forward through the agenda, I believe the, the next item is the second read of the face covering policy. This is the policy that was reviewed and approved at our joint school committee meeting on August 19th, 2021. It's unchanged from that time and we voted at that time to have policy go into immediate effect. But for a fill and suspenders approach, we are conducting the customary second reading tonight. So I, I'd like to invite a motion to approve the face covering policy. And once that motion's on the table, we can discuss any, anything the committee would like to discuss. Is there a motion? Colleen?
I, yeah.
A second?
My second.
Thank you, Liz. And discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll, we'll go ahead and proceed with a vote. Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, yes. Okay, we next have the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from our June 8th, 2021 meeting. I'd actually like to suggest a few revisions on these under item seven, which is the approval of the 2021, 2022 student handbook. I would suggest that we remove the sentence, the changes will be voted on at the next meeting. I assume that might have been left over from a set of prior minutes since we did indeed vote to approve the handbook, as is reflected in the vote on those June 8th minutes. And then for item eight, which is approval of the 2021, 2022 school improvement plan, I would suggest that we make a similar change by removing the sentence. The plan will be voted on at the next meeting, since we did indeed take the vote. And, and we should revise the sentence that follows to Colleen Burt made a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 school improvement plan instead of consent agenda with that, which I think might have just been a typo for the, given that was the following, following piece. Do others have any comments or revisions to suggest or comments on my suggested revisions? All right, I'd like to invite a motion to approve the consent agenda with the revisions as just discussed.
Mark Healy, still moved?
Mark, thanks. Second?
Colleen Burt, second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll take our roll call vote. Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, yes. Okay, let me take a look at where we are here. I think that the only thing left is, are the communications for members' information. We've included our school committee meeting calendar for this academic year. The Sherburne School Committee's meeting minutes from June 16th, 2021 and the regional school committee's meeting minutes from June 8th, 2021, 2021. We will need to finalize our Dover School Committee subcommittee, subcommittee assignments after a new member is appointed. I think that concludes our, our business this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Colleen Burt, so moved.
A second?
Liz Grossman, second.
All right, all those in favor? Hi. All right, thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.